We'll start in order with what is on the agenda. And the first item is continue public hearing, annual town meeting zoning article or an article 16. So can you tee up for us where we are on that? And we will then continue the hearing.
The petitioner has made additional amendments to the current proposed warrant article. Specifically, it's to avoid confusion about the height waiver criteria. They're proposing to eliminate that criteria and instead default to the special permit criteria described under section 1031 of the zoning bylaw. So John Smolak's here to speak on behalf of that.
Okay. Do you have -- is there language here? Have you given us all?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I explain?
Before we start, everybody know where we are? Okay. Yes. Go ahead, John.
Chairman, for the record, John Smolak, I'm saying the petitioner and myself. And Andrew Chabon, Princeton Properties, is here as well, the project proponent. Just as a follow-up to the last board meeting, there are two items that were requested by the board, one of which was sort of a survey of other cities and towns and what they do in terms of multifamily permitting. And in the materials that we provided was a list of 10 separate municipalities, all of whom approved multifamily by special permit through the planning board, or their equivalent of a planning board, such as a community development board. With one minor deviation, and that was Andover, which allows for a special permit for multifamily housing development for 12 units or more, as opposed to an alternative mechanism for smaller projects of 12 units for less that would be approved by the zoning board of appeals. So it's pretty clear that, in terms of the survey of the cities and towns that we looked at, that multifamily permitting is principally through a planning board, at least in the general vicinity of this town. So I think that lends sort of additional support to the proposal that we've been making, which was to rest that review process in the hands of the planning board. So that was--
But that would only be in case that it was not fully--
Correct.
Because the 40Bs required would be done by the zoning board.
That's correct. And a 40B is, as you know, is under completely different criteria. And from a design standpoint, typically, cities and towns will rest this authority within the hands of the planning board because they do have additional staff and resources typically used by the planning board to assist them in their design review. So that was one item. The second item, I think Rebecca already covered, and that was the clarification of the language with respect to the proposed waiver of height provisions. And I understand from the last hearing that, and I reviewed the tape from the last hearing, that there was some concern or confusion over the criteria that were being used, and it may not have been criteria that folks have been used to. So a fair amount of that criteria was actually excerpted from the Andover zoning bylaws under the general special permit criteria. But to avoid confusion, what I've done is simply eliminated those criteria and replaced them with the board's, this board's special permit criteria under 10.31 of the zoning bylaw. So I figured that it would be much easier for the board to make a determination using the criteria under 10.31, since the board is familiar with that over the past 20 years, has used that same criteria. So, you know, hopefully that clarifies that particular issue as to review criteria for a special permit.
John, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Rebecca, I have probably the packet. This, which shows the edits, but that's not the same as this.
That's correct. Those are the amendment edits. Would you like to see the original?
No. What I'm saying is, the edits I have here do not match this document here, even when the edits are accepted.
Oh, we haven't updated that based on the fact that we haven't had a discussion about it for the--
So which document is the most recent one? This one?
This is the one that was just submitted. That's the original submission.
Original.
Exactly. So there's no six in that one because that was the original citizen's petition that was filed.
So the one we should be looking at is this one?
This is the amended petition that was just recently submitted.
Okay.
Can you make the font a little larger, chairs, wrenches, for us all to hear?
Yeah, if you could, please. Only one person can speak at a time. You've got to go to the thing, otherwise we're going to have confusion. So if you can, we can address that. But if you can do that, can you make it any bigger? I think if you make it any bigger, what's going to happen is it's going to--
Very good.
Yeah? Okay.
Very nice.
So basically, where we started from was a general waiver of height that would be allowed by special permit. Based on input that we received from folks in the neighborhood and others, what we've done is further limited that height waiver to those parcels of land that are five or more acres in size, located within the B2 zoning district. Also, that waiver would only be allowed for a residential component of the proposed project.
So where are the--
And--
I'm sorry. Didn't mean interrupting. Where are the parcels in B2 that are larger than five acres within the town?
There are actually two of them. And I think they may have been in your materials that were submitted in the past, but one of them is obviously the Fuggeri Development Parcel--
On 125.
On 125.
Right.
And the second parcel is at 2022 Sutton Street, which is the Charles Construction property the Matzis family owns. If you know where Bueno Bistro is, that's on Sutton Street, by the corner of Sutton Street and Charles Street. That's an existing, a former mill building that actually used to be four stories in height until the early '60s, when it was reduced down to two stories. And it's surrounded by land that's zoned and does industrialness. And to the rear, it's an elevated railroad track.
Can you show the map where that second parcel, five acres, B2, was located?
The second parcel?
I think it was in the packet.
Sutton Street.
Sutton Street.
That's right. Just about close to the intersection of Main Street--
Of Main Street. Right. Okay.
Just to the right.
Okay.
Where Main Street meets Sutton Street.
Okay. Sorry.
So it's a very limited circumstance where this waiver provision would apply, and it also limits the extent of the height that could be increased from existing conditions, from going from basically three to four stories.
But what if someone acquired multiple pieces of property that's listed there?
What if people acquired multiple pieces of property to assemble?
To make the five acres.
Well, I think that, no, that's a possibility in any situation, but again, it's all by special permit. So if the planning board chooses to entertain an application and feels that a waiver of height is acceptable, then they would be able to utilize that option. Otherwise, they could say, no, we don't like it. We don't think it's appropriate for this neighborhood.
So, John, I have a question about sort of application of this. I know that it's been compared to what was done with East Mill, West Mill last year. But in that case, and I just don't recall it, was that example specific to one site and one site only?
Well, it was specific to the district, and the district was limited to one site. So we practically knew. What this would be limited to would be the list of these sites here. And I think to answer the question, you can actually look in the list and see where there's even the opportunity to do that. And practically speaking, the 1070, 1060, and 1,000, that's still to, that's still not five acres, so.
Plus, you have the F A flight path--
Yeah. So, I mean, practically speaking, there's, I mean, I think here is, it's what you see as what you got. So these would be the only ones where there would be a possibility would come into play, but they would have to be, you know, combined into five acres for any of the other ones that are less than five. So what I'd like to do is to have the board ask whatever further questions. Then I'd like to turn it over to the public, and then we can come back and deliberate what we're going to do. So--
Mr. Chairman, can I just add just one last--
Yeah.
In terms of the discussion?
And that is the reason why we're undertaking this process. As we discussed before, it's designed to streamline the process. And because currently, if you were to act under the current zoning, you'd have to go to the ZBA, file your application, submit all your peer review information. They would make a determination by special permit, using the same exact criteria that the planning board would make. And so then, if the ZBA adopts or agrees or grants a special permit, then you would next have to go to the planning board, which would be site plan review for both the commercial and residential. But keep in mind that if you were to file with the zoning board of appeals, only the zoning board of appeals has limited jurisdiction, and that's only over the residential or the townhouse proposal that's out there. So they would have to, they'd only have to be able, they'd only be able to review this in isolation from any commercial component, which makes it difficult from a planning standpoint.
I understand that. So any other? Yes.
I do want to go back to the-- Okay. So you took out the substantially more detrimental part. That's all I wanted to make sure.
Right.
Because I thought that was really vague, but, okay.
Right.
I'm good.
No. It's out. I don't disagree. Yeah. We tried to clean that up.
So what I'd like to do is, because I know there's a lot of interest, community interest in this, I'd like to see if anybody has any other questions. I know we answered a lot of questions last time, but if people have further questions about this, please, this is your chance to ask those questions. If you could come up to the--
I have two things.
Okay.
Four stories, I think we should have an actual height. You know, four stories, if they did 14-foot ceilings, it'd be a 65-foot building. I think we should clarify, create on a double height floor, and then have it equivalent to an eight-story building.
Sort of similar to like what's in four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. You know, something reasonable.
Four or five. Yeah. I mean, five. Yeah.
Yeah. And then, I think as a trade-off, I think what should make it reasonable is that I think we have a density waiver that we're allowed to do is if we're waving, if we're giving them a height waiver, is that we restrict density as a trade-off, that there's no density waiver and height waiver. So for future planning boards, you can't get both. And I think that'd be--
Well, the--
Well, wouldn't it be discretionary?
Yeah. But if you want to, if you were worried about properties combining parcels in the future to get away with something, that if we put in a density restriction, that you can't, a planning, future planning board 10 years down the road couldn't get a density and a height waiver, too.
Well, the problem then becomes, we'd almost have to backtrack and sort of start over on this about what reasonably makes sense. And I think this by itself, you know, kind of, I think we've got a logical understanding of what's happening here, which I think we can manage, so.
And we do remain discretionary, right? In the future? So if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't--
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if the planning board wanted to change it 10 years in the future, they'd go through this process and change it.
Right.
Well, they wouldn't have to. Well, they can vote, but it doesn't have to be the intensity waiver. If it's not in there, they'd have to go to town meeting to get a change.
Well-- All we're talking about is a process. So we're not talking about, you know, it's related to a project, but--
Basically, we're trying to give the planning board an additional planning tool to make a determination. Ultimately, if you get, if we get to the planning board as part of a hearing process, does an increase in height make sense from a planning standpoint because it opens up space, spaces in the area? It's simply another planning tool that we're trying to give to the planning board, which they may or may not use at their discretion.
You know, actually, John, the risk isn't that somebody combines property. It's that farmland is combined into, you know, is converted for something like this.
Well, it had to be resold.
Where?
Right now, these are the ones that are the guidelines in the town, right?
Right. That's correct. We corroborated those, that list of parcels with Jean. We put the list together.
I believe somebody did have a question, if you could come up.
My name is Kathleen Caldwell. I live at 253 Hickory Hill Road. And I was a former North Andover planner many moons ago, and I am now the current planner in Methuen. And Rebecca sadly just left us to come to you, so I know you're in very good hands with Rebecca. So I have looked at this and talked with some of my neighbors, talked with John Smolak, talked with Rebecca. We've kind of looked at this so I could give you some of my thoughts as both a resident who lives near the location and as a planning input. So I do strongly believe that the planning board in general is the better board to look at this type of project. I have confidence that the planning boards look at these projects all the time. They're used to looking at a residential and a commercial component together. They're used to looking at traffic issues, design issues, working with engineers to make sure the stormwater is managed appropriately and to really handle that, this large-type project. So generally, I would think that the, strongly believe throughout the town that the planning board is the right board for this. The planning board also has staff to help review these projects. The zoning board really doesn't. They're more used to the small variance-type setback issues. They don't generally deal with these. I know they do deal with 40Bs, but again, that's a whole different, different thing, with a different review and a different set of criteria. So I think that is a total, different discussion. Right now, we're talking about a commercial residential component discussion. And finally, I think as a neighbor, as an, well, I'm not an official abuser, but as a neighbor, if you have to go to the zoning board, and then the planning board, and then the zoning board, and then the planning board, it's just fatigue and tiring, and you lose interest. You lose that public input. And so I do think that there's a value to keeping it all within one board. So I think that's, those are my comments. And I do, I did, I did have input on the height changing it because I did hear those concerns that we didn't want to have a four-story commercial component, that we did want to just limit it to this site, that we did just want four stories. And I agree, putting in a number in there also is a good idea as well. So--
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Would you say, and I don't mean to totally put you on the spot because you didn't poll everybody in the neighborhood, but would you say your view is a consensus view or a common view? Is there a strongly opposed view or?
I think there's a lot of concern in general about what's going to go in there. But I think, I guess I really can't say for, as a consensus view. I think there's a concern about it. My sense is, I think what's been portrayed to everybody is that we're not allowing something, by making these changes, you're not really changing what's allowed, you're not changing the standard of review. You're just simply changing the board that's going to look at it. That's really all that we're doing. Because right now, they could go to the zoning board, they could get a special permit, they could go to the zoning board and get a height variance. So the variance is a different standard, but the special permit is the same standard. But as we heard from Attorney Smolak, right now, they'd have to start with the zoning board, get a special permit for the multifamily component. Then they'd come back to, and possibly, then they'd come back to the planning board for site plan special permit on the residential slash commercial piece. But the residential piece would have already been reviewed by the zoning board, so possibly this board, when looking at it, would say, well, wait a minute. I think you should, we really want to move this here, and we want to move there, but so then you've got to go back to the zoning board. I just, you know, I know as a planner, it's much easier if you can work with a developer with the whole piece of property and really try to find the best fit. And I just feel like these changes will let this board and your staff do that without having to bounce between boards and make a better project at the end of the day. So I think the message is that we know something's going to happen on the property. We know it right now. It can be a commercial slash residential. So is it better to have it all in one board, or is it better to split it up between boards?
I have a comment to share from people I've talked to, just in the candy about it, which has nothing to do with the process, and I think it sounds like it makes a lot of sense to me to put the process all in one place rather than split it up. But just concerns I've heard is, a lot of our schools are so overcrowded at this point, and to talk about adding a lot more housing, no matter where it is, is going to potentially tax the schools, so.
Yeah. Well, you missed the last meeting.
Yeah, I know.
And then, I mean, the thing about is never say never, but if what we have been told by the applicant for this project of what they would build, it would be the type of thing that you would typically find. It's not three-bedroom, four-bedroom kind of things that would draw a lot of children into the community, or be smaller and probably at the minimum number of children. Now, you know, can you take it to the bank? Well, I mean, I presume, you know, not, but, yeah. And then again, if they propose something with three and four bedrooms, that's part of the planning process, right? That would be.
Right.
So, but fair enough. Any other comments from the board?
So how do we deal with adding in the height part to this?
Well, I think, kind of the number that sits in my head is 55, but I don't know if that's the right number. I don't know if typically, four stories is 50. Help us, help us here.
55 would certainly work for what we have in mind, Mr. Chairman. If we're generally talking about four stories in height, apartments today have moved from eight-foot ceilings to nine-foot ceilings. So to Ms. Rednicki's concern, you don't want them to advance beyond that, you know, 11, 12, 13 feet, like you see in some mill products. So the type of product that we would be bringing before the board would have nine-foot ceilings. At four floors, it would be 36 feet plus the delta, and then, again, depending on where the measurement starts, whether we're going to the mean of the roof, et cetera. So certainly 55 is well within tolerance, and certainly something we could accept.
50 would--
50 would, 50 or--
What?
50 might be tight if we want some--
55, then.
55 would be a comfortable number for a traditional four-story slab-on-grade building.
And that would cover the air conditioning coolers on the top of the roof?
It certainly would. We're likely to propose those things on the ground and behind landscaping, so as not to have it at the rooftop, because we want to be sensitive to the view from Osgood Street, both for the residents and everything else. So we're likely to put that equipment down, and we're likely to have it landscaped as opposed to putting it on the roof.
So I have one further question. So there's no way, reading this, anyone, that this can be interpreted to include that the commercial part is included in this waiver, right?
No.
That's from--
I know. I know. I'm just saying ambiguity or anything.
How about putting residential in the, residential multifamily in town, the word residential in there?
I'm just saying.
No, it won't hurt to put another.
I just, I think--
You could possibly have commercial townhouses.
I'm just saying, it could be commercial on the bottom or--
Well, what you would say is for residential--
Town. I like the word residential in there.
Properties included. Okay.
I'm just saying--
Fair enough. Fair enough. So other than that, is everybody okay with this, or what are people's thoughts?
Could you just help me a little bit, John? I mean, I get the B2, but the criteria of five acres, can--
Well, I think the idea adds up being is, what we're trying to do, and this gets into, you know, I think sometimes it's a fallacy to think you can have perfect zoning ordinance, that you could just put things in, and everything would work for every project. So what you have to do is, I think, provide a little bit of flexibility, but not open-ended discretion. So what we said is, if we were going to allow something that's a little bit higher than we did, what could we reasonably do that would make it work and it wouldn't just give the planning board complete discretion? So first thing you do is you say, well, I don't want it on a really small lot, because if I put a really tall building on a really small lot, it really would look like hell. So what I'll do is, I'll make it subject to only, you know, larger parcels that could probably carry it. Then the second thing that's going on here is, we said, as we just discussed, it's only meant to be for residential properties, multifamily, and townhouses. And then the third thing we said is that it's four stories, 55 feet. So what we're doing is we're creating limited flexibility. And if you think about it, it works perfectly for what these folks are proposing, because they're saying, what we would rather do is we would have fewer buildings, maybe more open space, more flexibility where we put the properties. And oh, by the way, we already know it's going to be probably in the back of the property anyway, and it's a large property. So it feels to me it all fits, and it's reasonable planning, so.
Just getting back to the multifamily and townhouse definition, they define it in the zoning bylaw--
As residential. So, I mean, multi--
Just like the belts and--
Yeah. No, no, it's a good point.
That's good, too, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so what I would say at this point is, if, unless there's any other comments from the audience, that I would entertain a motion to recommend favorable action on this, pending if we want to do any very minor language tweaking.
I believe we recommend favorable action on Article 16. Do I need to read the whole title?
No.
Okay.
Which we want to add in with the change--
With the change to add the 55 height requirement.
Yeah.
So it'd be four stories or 55 feet in height? Is that how you'd like to--
And--
55 feet is the maximum.
And no more than--
No more than 55.
Can't be five stories.
Four stories. Yeah. Four stories.
No more than four stories and no higher than 55.
Correct.
Beautiful.
And residential.
Residential.
Okay. So Dave made the motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Good process, good discussion. I think, you know, good neighborhood dialogue. You're going to have to continue to do it because, you know, obviously, when we get into the planning process, we want people to feel comfortable, you know--
Yeah.
With how it works. And I think you're off to a good start, but keep it up.
You know, and when you get to the specifics of that, the traffic is going to be a real--
Yeah. Okay. Everybody is here for the next one. Okay. So I think most people that are here are actually for here for this hearing. I think, just by a show of hands, are you, most of the folks, who's here for this next item, the Verizon? Okay. So just, if you're not familiar with the process, what we typically do is, we first have our planner sort of give an overview of what's going on. Then we have the applicant explain what the project is. The board will ask questions, and then we'll let you ask as many questions as you want. And probably someplace along the way, we'll explain sort of the legal context of what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do under the law. So, but I think I might want to wait till get that in context. So Rebecca, if you could tell us what's going on here?
Okay. So Verizon is seeking a wireless facility special permit in order to install cloud radio access network technology. It's called C-RAN, on 24 utility poles owned by National Grid located in various locations in the town. The Verizon representatives had approached the board back in December requesting a waiver from the wireless review permit. And at the December 1st meeting in 2015, the board questioned whether or not this was a licensing issue with the Board of Selectmen, or if it was a special permit with the board. Then on January 25th, 2016, the Board of Selectmen agreed with Verizon that this was a project to be permitted under a wireless facility special permit. So then the application came to us, and we hired a wireless review consultant. His name is David Maxson with Isotope. He just provided his review on Sunday evening, so he just gave it to us essentially on Monday, so that was put in your packets. The applicant has not had a chance to respond to this. Again, he also just received these comments on Monday. The consultant essentially had some concerns to be initially addressed in terms-- The consultant essentially had some concerns to be initially addressed in terms of the dimensional requirements. And as you're all aware, most of the dimensional requirements for wireless facility permit goes through the ZDA. In this particular case, we would need to get some additional information from the building commissioner. And unfortunately, he has been on vacation for the last few weeks, so we haven't really been able to get his feedback in regards to those dimensional requirements. Additionally, the consultant had brought up the issue of whether or not the planning board has the ability to regulate or enforce zoning regulations in the public right of way. And we're basing on the assumption that the North Andover zoning bylaw gives the planning board the authority to regulate wireless facilities and those apply to those located within the public way. We actually were trying to look at some other communities who have handled this before, as you guys had heard previously in December, and just our neighboring town of Andover, they actually viewed the same decision that because of their bylaw, they had the ability to regulate this particular permit. And another community such as Amesbury, they use an electrical permit. And in Brockton, they actually do a building permit. So it's a new technology and there's different ways to go about it. And that brings us to the last question the consultant proposed, which was specifically in regards to what forum would be appropriate for reviewing these types of applications? Would it be a wireless facility from it or would it be a site plan review? And that's really at the discretion of the board to discuss further at this point in time. So we do have Chris Weniarski, who had been with the board back in December and had presented this. They have a model of what the technology looks like. And as you can see from the screen in front of you, this is an overview of all of the proposed locations, all of the 24 utility pole locations that they are proposing to put this technology on. So I would pass it off to Chris so that he can explain more about what their application is about and give some of his feedback unless the board has some further questions.
Okay. Good, thank you. Good summary. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Weniarski. I'm an attorney for Verizon Wireless. I do agree with, I think 100% of Rebecca's summary there. Maybe only one difference. I think I would request a waiver of site plan review. It's a common sense approach. There's no site here. There's no site plan to review. But let me give you a brief explanation of the technology first and then we can get into those specifics. What we're doing here is new technology that is an alternative to the traditional wireless communications facilities that I'm sure all of you have seen in the past. In the past, we would build what we call macro cells or macro facilities, which could consist of a rooftop installation or a tower. And that's generally designed to cover or provide service to an area within a certain radius around that facility. And obviously, the size of that radius will depend on topography, obstructions, things like that. This is a much more efficient way and a totally different way of doing it. What this does is pinpoints very dense areas of concentrated demand and provides the service to the residents in those spots without creating sort of duplicative coverage in other areas that don't really need the increased service. And by doing that, we're allowed to, we can, we're able to do this with very small, very unobtrusive facilities. As we explained in December, these consist of a single omnidirectional antenna that is attached to an existing utility pole. That's obviously a location favored specifically in your bylaw, favored in almost every bylaw I encounter for obvious reasons. It's much better to use an existing pole than it is to build a new tower. The antenna, as I showed you before, this is it. This is a real one, a functioning one. It's designed to look just like a transformer. My guess is you wouldn't know this was on the utility pole if nobody told you it was there. It doesn't look different than the equipment that's there. In fact, there's one on the utility pole at the top of my driveway. I had no idea until I started doing this. I took a look and it's there. This doesn't have really an aesthetic impact. It's something that really blends in and is commonplace.
If this is mounted on top of it?
Yeah, if you could, please wait until the applicant's done. I appreciate that.
But I can answer that question too, and that was part of what I was going to go into. These are mounted on top of the pole or on the side of the pole. And that depends from location to location as to what the specific need is, what sort of obstructions there may be, and also more importantly, what space was made available to us by the owner of the pole in North Andover. That's National Grid. So either way, though, it still is the same sort of installation with minimal impact. I mean, this really is not very much to look at at all, something that you probably wouldn't notice. Now, for that reason, we've asked for several waivers with respect to the specific requirements of your bylaw. And most of those are just common sense waivers. It's requirements that would not be applicable to this sort of thing. A lot of them, again, had to do with the site plan requirements where we do not have a site here. We're putting this on an existing utility pole. As Rebecca had mentioned, we are doing this all over the Commonwealth, all over New England right now. And it is a little bit tricky for most municipalities to figure out exactly where this falls into the regulatory regime. And that's because this technology is new. We started doing this back in December when I first came before you. Nobody had a bylaw that addressed it then. Nobody has really changed their bylaw since. I know I was in Salem last week and they're proposing a change to address this right now. So it does get difficult to figure out what sort of permitting is required. You know, I had proposed this to the board back in December. We talked about it. We also went before the Board of Selectmen, who I got the impression would rather this board handle it. And that's fine. You can construe this under your bylaw as a wireless communication facility. It falls within that definition. But obviously, when you read through that bylaw, you see that a lot of the logical intent of that bylaw is aimed at towers and large rooftop installations and discusses requirements that really don't make a whole lot of sense in the context of something like this. That really is a summary of what we're proposing to do. We think it is really the absolute best way to provide service to any municipality, North Andover and anywhere else, without creating any sort of significant visual impact. You probably can guess that the demand for wireless service is huge right now. It grows exponentially. Five, 10 years ago, everyone had a phone in their pocket. Today, nobody's got a phone in their pocket. You have a computer in your pocket right now. The network needs to be able to serve that demand that your residents have. This is the absolute best way to do it in our eyes. I'm happy to hear if anyone has a better way, but I can't imagine that there is a less obtrusive way to do it than this.
Do these things make any noise?
None.
Okay. And how often do they have to be maintained?
Well, they, we have a way of monitoring whether there's an issue or not, so there is no regularly scheduled maintenance on this. If it fails, it gets replaced. But there, it's not like a car or anything where you do a regular oil change or anything like that. There is no regular maintenance on this. If it stops functioning, we know right away, we replace it. So virtually no maintenance, really.
Are there any hazardous items inside, for example, any liquid inside the container?
Nope, it just looks like a transformer. It's not actually a transformer. Yep. No, it's an antenna, just like the other antennas that you see on top of every tower. It's just designed with essentially this canister of RF transparent material to hide the antenna that's inside. It's basically electronics and plastic, no liquids of any kind.
And you have to comply with all the FCC standards.
Without a doubt, without a doubt. Everything has to be manufactured to FCC standards, just like every device, your phones, your cordless phones in your house, your microwave in your house. I mean, everything that emits any sort of electromagnetic emission has to be manufactured to comply with FCC standards, and these are no different.
I, after your December presentation, you said you were going to be installing the units in Amesbury.
Mm-hmm.
And we got the addresses and I went up in the Christmas rush, unfortunately, and took pictures of the things. I had a terrible time trying to find them, even though I had the address. I had, first one, I actually had to have a man say, was that something that the telephone company came and put up?
Yep. That's the goal. That's the point.
It's really just on top of the thing and it looks, it wasn't painted that color. It was brown.
Right. In some cases, if a municipality requests that we paint it, we will. If anyone wants one painted, we can paint it any color you want. This is the manufactured color because that's the neutral gray that transformers come in. Transformers are actually not a RF transparent material. They're usually sheet metal, so they turn brown from rust over the years. That doesn't happen to this. But yeah, I mean, if, I think in Amesbury, there was a thought that maybe by painting it brown, it looks more like it belongs with the telephone pole.
It sure did.
Yeah. You know, like I said, we can paint it any color.
Can I ask you a question about, like, it's going to be on the top, so like, what about like in a lightning storm or something like that? Does it act as a conductor or anything, you know?
No, it's, again, it's no different than anything else on the pole. Theoretically, it could be struck by lightning. We do have ground bars on these, just like all the other equipment on an electrical pole.
Issues in town with transformers and I'm just saying, like, it's not going to affect that, right?
No. I mean, it's entirely possible that lightning can strike this, just as lightning can strike a person walking down the sidewalk. There's no way to know. But, I mean, this certainly doesn't create any additional risk of lightning strikes or anything like that. It's no different than anything else.
Well, it's going to be so high, so it does, right? Isn't it like lightning strikes the highest point? That's all I'm saying.
I think it's much more complicated than that.
I took science back in the day. That's all.
Don't act like that.
I'm just saying, we have so many issues with power outages. That's all I'm concerned about.
This has, this will have no effect on the electrical service.
Okay, you're sure? It's going to be right next to it.
A positive.
Okay.
Distribution transformers generally don't get struck by lightning.
And this isn't, this is just an antenna.
Why would they do so? A couple of questions. You may have said this, but what's the approximate weight of the unit once the antenna is inside?
It's about 22 pounds. This one has an antenna. You can pick it up. I mean, better than me telling you.
No, no, you don't have to.
Pretty light.
I'm just asking.
I can toss it to you.
What the waste is.
Twenty, 22 pounds and change.
So my other question was, my understanding from the January meeting was that Verizon was planning on submitting a special permit on a pilot basis for five or six locations. And now what I'm seeing is 24.
Mm-hmm.
What's the reason for the change from in January, a pilot for five or six to 24? I mean, it's a fairly big change.
In December, we had one, actually. And what we had discussed is that we thought in the near future, we would probably have five or six and that eventually we would have somewhere in the 30s. The near future came and went. We're now, almost six months later, we have 24 of them that are ready to go that NSTAR has agreed to give us the space for, so we're trying to roll them all out as quickly as possible. You know, that's another key component of this technology is the speed of deployment. And that gives us the flexibility to meet the demand of the consumers here in North Andover. You know, if these were sort of treated like a regular wireless communications facility where sometimes the permitting process goes well over six months, sometimes in violation of 48, this becomes impractical for us to do because it takes 24 of these to cover the area where we're trying to provide coverage. If we're talking a six-month permitting timeline, all those, this whole project doesn't make sense. It makes sense to go back to the old way of doing things.
When you say pilot, you typically evaluate something.
What were you going to evaluate?
That wasn't my idea. That was simply what we were discussing with the board and saying, that's what we had at the moment. So I had nothing to propose to you that was going to be a different evaluation and that's not, we didn't have an evaluation process as to saying, hey, we're going to try a few of these and see what's going to work. It's my impression that that was something discussed by the board, not on this side. We were simply waiting to have these ready to go. And the main holdup there is permission from the utility that owns the poles. I mean, we obviously need their permission before we can apply. They have a process in place and that takes some time. So on our end, it wasn't a pilot program that we were going to test it out and see if it worked. You know, we'd be happy with doing them all at once if we could get those permissions from the utility as quickly as we'd like, but it just doesn't happen that way.
How do I land on these exact 24 locations? Is that just the demand on the network and what they provided or were the utility company provided or is there some other additional criteria?
We can monitor the demand pretty closely such that we know how many users in a particular area are experiencing less than optimum coverage, maybe throttle, download or upload speeds. So we know that. We know where the demand is stronger than what the network can provide. And we isolate those areas and then we look for a pole in that specific area. We do have to work with NSTAR and say, okay, this is the ideal pole that we would like. Can we use this one? Sometimes they say yes, sometimes they say no. And that can depend on the structural integrity of the pole, the particular equipment that NSTAR has on the pole. So from our perspective, we identify by the pinpointed specific demand that we see and then we seek out the best possible pole for that. If we have to make a little bit of a compromise for the needs of the utility, we will. If it's so much of a compromise that it's not serving the demand, then we don't do it.
Because I remember in the meeting back in December, there was discussion to say, these might not be so bad on 114. I mean, it's a multilane road and a lot of business traffic versus, you know, I just noticed Parker Street because I live right in that area. It's a very residential, you know, nice residential district and maybe it wouldn't be as desirable in that kind of setting versus on the 114.
I mean, that's one way to look at it, that nothing may be more desirable than something. But, you know, the thing to, the thing to remember is what this provides. Everybody uses a mobile device and you can't do that with an invisible network. It's going to be visible. So this is our attempt to make it invisible and it's pretty darn close. I mean, I don't see anybody doing it better than this. And I see what our competitors are doing. I frequently run into them at these meetings. We're a fairly small community, so we all know each other. So while I can understand, you know, we would all rather have nothing than something, and that even goes, you know, if you live in a house and there's a vacant lot across the street, sure, we'd love to look at trees rather than another house. But the bottom line is whoever owns that land has the right to do something with it. Here, we have what is essentially a utility, what everybody in North Andover wants. And when I say everybody, there might be a few holdouts there who don't use mobile devices, but for the purposes of discussion, I think we can assume it's everybody.
What's the proximity that just, I'm only nitpicking on this one because I live in that neighborhood and I know exactly where that is.
Mm-hmm.
It's right behind where the high, where the middle school is. So like, as an example, a utility pole that's sitting in a middle school parking lot might, versus the neighborhood street that's adjacent, like, would it matter if it's, seems like it'd be better in a school parking lot than in a, on a neighborhood street. So I'm just curious. It's a very short distance between that and the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Is that affecting it, that amount of difference? Like, what's the range where if you moved it over there, it's going to be less effective if I'm sitting here or if you move it a mile away, it's less effective if I'm sitting here? Like, what's the range of impact of that thing?
The range of, right, the range is quite small. This is designed to, like I was saying earlier, focus on a very specific demand. So a very rough estimate would be, think of like an eighth of a mile. It's very, very tight. And that's a very rough estimate. I mean, it's very much dependent on the exact height and the things surrounding it, the obstructions. So to go around thinking all of these do one eighth of a mile, that's not true.
Yeah, that's much smaller than what I was thinking.
Yes.
So it's helpful, thank you.
It's very, very focused. That's the whole point of this. We're trying to build facilities that serve only the need and don't do anything else. And again, that's because we're, you know, we're sensitive to the impact. I mean, I'm not going to tell you that we are, our focus is obviously to do this as fast as possible and to provide the service. And we know that the impact slows us down in getting these permitted and deploying them. And for that reason, we try to do what all towns we think would like to see.
So I guess my other concern would be, six months ago, it was five and now it's 24. So in six months from now, is it going to be 48 and a half? I mean, when I look at it.
It may very well be, is the case. I mean, interestingly enough, it's the first time we've ever gotten a public hearing notice in the mail, and it turns out one of them actually is down the street from me. So I did get the notice. But I mean, sort of the way I look at it is, you know, while I'm not the biggest fan in the world of above-ground utilities, they're there. And I actually went up Dale Street, and I actually never paid any attention to how many transformers there were. And there were actually a lot more than I ever thought, and this is going to basically be a replica of that. I mean, it's kind of, you know, I think visually, it's really pretty benign, frankly, you know?
On the transformer itself, one thing that you didn't speak of is all the guide wires that are, wires that are coming down, the electric meter that's going to be at five feet to eight foot high, and then the junction box, which is going to be at 10 feet. Do you have those devices, the size of them here? Because those are going to be at eye level. I agree that that's going to be fairly unobtrusive.
Yep, not at eye level. They should all be above eye level.
Five feet is eye level, electric meter.
If we have one at five feet, there must be some sort of unique circumstance about that. And the location of the electric meter is not our choosing. That's by the utility. That's a standard electric meter, just like the one on every single building. And we do try to place it higher. We're concerned about security. We don't want any of our equipment at eye level because we really don't want it at hand level. That's what we care about.
Right.
We don't want anybody disturbing it. Those things again.
Do you have a picture, Rebecca, in there of the electrical equipment?
How many of the junction boxes are there?
Let me grab a set of plans. Each plan has the exact dimensions of each. But we're talking 37 by 11 feet wi, I'm sorry, 11 inches wide, 6 inches deep. So about that tall, but pretty thin, attached to the side of the pole.
37, so three feet?
Yep.
By one foot?
Yep, roughly.
How deep again?
Six inches.
Okay.
So, and that's flush mounted to the pole. That's a picture of the existing pole, but the rendition on the left shows you the equipment. And again, all of this equipment is the same type of equipment that is already on the poles. In fact, most of the junction boxes that you look at on poles are much larger than these. All of this equipment is designed to blend in with the existing appearance.
And will that be the same color?
Is there one more, Rebecca?
The junction, junction boxes, can they be painted?
Absolutely.
It's just, okay.
Enlarge the portion on the left-hand side.
Yeah, enlarge the picture. Five to eight.
But so you're going to have two-inch conduit on both sides, half-inch coax, two-inch conduit. By the time you're done, you're actually going to be enlarging the pole by about 25% the width of it, respectively.
Ah, no, no, not, not 25%. I mean, we're really putting, putting on one.
If it's on each side, yeah, it's 25%.
It's not on each side. It's just one, one six-inch thick junction box. And again, this looks just like the existing equipment.
Well, this shows the conduit running, there's one conduit on one side and two on the other side, is what your plan is showing on this one.
Yeah, the conduit's, two-inch conduit.
Yeah, on both sides, and then another one, which is a fiber on two-inch conduit. So that's six inches. That's a 25% increase in the pole width.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, it's conduit. I mean, that's what the poles are meant for. There's already conduit on most of them.
Not running down the length of them.
Yeah, there, yeah, there usually is. This particular pole does not have it, but if it's a pole serving a building with electricity, it does. That's how it comes down in a conduit. There's no other way. They don't run the wire through the center of the pole.
Dave, did you notice the conduit in Amesbury? Did you notice the conduit on one in Amesbury?
You know, you can see, actually, I saw two. I couldn't find the third, even though it's where I go for pizza. But, no, there's some wires coming down, but it was nothing that after two days would not be invisible to you.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we cannot make this invisible, and I will never tell you that this is invisible. What I would tell you is this is our best effort to come as close to invisible as possible, and it is a really, really, really good attempt at doing it. I haven't seen anyone even come close to doing it the way we do it.
But these poles, some of them are in people's yards. Yes, they're in the right of way, but are there not some in some people's yards?
There are some that people will see from their yards, yeah.
Not see from the yards. Are any of these in a property owner's yard?
No, they're all in the public right of way.
They're all in the public way, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one unit I did find in Amesbury is right near one of their parks. And it was very, very hard for me at first to find that one. But then having seen what that one looked like, I was able to find the one that's more in the downtown, closer to the downtown area. I never did find it down there. So, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, 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 I wanted to ask you about emissions. And I know there's a federal preemption, but according to the analysis from ISOTROPE, seven of these are below the height where they do not enjoy the FCC waiver. So what's your thoughts about emissions survey or testing for those seven out of the, you know, so about a third of them are below that height?
Right. The FCC regulations don't require any sort of testing above 10 meters. And the reason is because it's a minimal, you can barely test it. A few of these are below that, so. Yeah, okay, if it's seven, that probably sounds about right. I didn't actually go through and check which ones are below.
I can list them for you if you want. They're in the report.
That's fine. I don't think I knew the list. I can answer the question without the list. I can certainly give you a statement from a radio frequency engineer that will certify that these will comply with FCC regulations as designed. That's a given for the reasons I was explaining before, that these are designed and manufactured in compliance with FCC regulations. As Verizon Wireless, we do this all over the country. We're not a fly-by-night operation. We don't break FCC regulations. We've been doing this for a while. So I can give you that documentation. What I can tell you, and what you've probably seen as a board in evaluating any sort of wireless communications facilities, the facilities themselves don't come anywhere close to the thresholds of the FCC regulations. It's usually less than 1%, maybe sometimes right around 1%. This is the antenna. This is not the device emitting the, EME is the electromagnetic emissions. The device in your pocket is the one doing the emitting. So while I can give you that statement if it's absolutely necessary, it's, it's a given to me. I mean, it really is, but I can give you that.
We do typically get it, so if we would appreciate that.
That's fine. We can give you that.
And I think my concern here, reading the report, is that seven of these are significantly below that height that the FCC waiver addresses. So are you saying that even when it is significantly below that height, and even when the instrument is closer to the ground below the FCC waiver height, that it's still significantly below?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Why would you have it at seven feet? That seems.
No, no, it's not at seven feet. There's seven sites. Seven of these installations out of the 24 are below the.
10 meters.
30 feet.
29.
I mean, our experience has been is we've done these over the years, because I'm trying to remember who on the board was back in the heyday of these things. We would do this every time, and invariably, that's what would come out. It would be like a fraction of 1% of the allowed limit. So you're looking at it, and you're saying it's a pretty big delta between what they're emitting and what the standard is, so.
I was just thinking that if I were to live near one of the ones that are below the height, it would be reassuring, I think, to have the statement that.
You're right. You're right, yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't have any problem providing that. We can do that. There are so many things in your house emitting so much more than an antenna on the pole outside your house that, and I can give you that report to put that into writing. That's fine, but it's.
But in that case, the things in your house are in your house because of your choice.
Yeah.
That's the difference here. So I think just as a matter of prudence, if that's possible, that, you know, I think it could be helpful.
We can give you that. That's not a problem, yeah.
And that, of course, is when the unit's manufactured, and, you know, there's always the question, does that change over time? Yeah, and just let me explain. Every town that I've ever lived in, there's always been concern about radiation emission from these towers.
Well, Dave, I want to cut you off because we're not allowed to address that under federal law.
I know, I was just explaining why.
Of course, that's everybody's concern about that. I understand why people worry about that, but we have absolutely no jurisdiction to be able to address those types of things, unfortunately.
And there, you know, and just to give you a little background, the reason why that federal law was passed, it's because there's no town that has the resources to study that. It's very similar to how the federal government regulates drugs. A CBS can come before you about a CBS coming in North Andover. The planning board can start evaluating the health effects of the drugs coming out of that CBS, for good reason, Dave. North Andover does not have the means and the resources to do that evaluation. It's very similar to electromagnetic emissions, and that's why it's specifically preempted by the law.
I've got this thing next to my, yeah.
In the last meeting, we asked, we talked about not thinking that we would want these on the poles that are like, half a pole is chopped off and attached to another pole because they didn't replace the pole. They just, yeah, the double poles. So none of these are on double poles.
The ones that we submitted in the site plan.
Yeah, the utilities, you know, I can't say they'll never let us put them on double poles, but they typically don't for that reason. The double poles are obviously a sore spot, you know, with just about every municipality, rightfully so. I mean, I sit on a board in my town. I've always been on ZDA in whatever town I'm in, and I know, I mean, that's frustrating. You know, you don't want that. The problem is, it's not nearly as easy to take those poles down as you may imagine. There are a lot of interests on that pole, and there's a way and an order that those things have to come down. And you're dealing with extremely large companies in each of those instances, and it takes a long time to cut through that red tape. I can appreciate, though, that it's, it's a nice art to have the double poles. We try very hard to avoid them for that reason. We don't want to get caught up in that controversy because it's not part of what we're doing.
So what happens in a semi?
Let's, I think we got to move, we got to move through at this point.
Those two other comments, the selectmen said, guide wires. A lot of these poles you showed on your samples had guide wires. Are you going to require guide wires?
Has nothing to do with what we're putting on. Our, our equipment's very lightweight, so some of these poles have guy wires on them already to hold up the pole. We are not adding guy wires for anything we're doing.
Do you know if any of the poles that you submitted have guide wires currently?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you identify, can you come back to us and let us know which one? Because the selectmen's made a comment about not having them on poles with guide wires, because they want to get rid of the guide wires. So if you put it on a pole with a guide wire, then it's going to be more of another, you have to take your equipment off to.
Yeah, that's a good catch, yeah.
So.
I can identify that, but I can't say that I'm going to withdraw my application for the ones that have guy wires because.
Well, let's just, yeah, stop what I got to say.
Let's just say if it's, if it's 10, it's different than if it's one or two.
Okay.
And then they, what was their, their concern?
Any areas where underground wiring is planned?
Right. Do we know of any, any areas where underground wiring on these locations, you know?
Well, that's a ticklish thing, isn't it?
No, what they're saying is places where the overhead utilities are planned to go underground.
Oh, to go under? I would presume you would never do that.
I think, I think the common was the only place we planned on it, you know?
It's the old center.
Old center, yeah.
Yeah, they're, I mean.
And the other area that.
That's part of the evaluation process in whether the utility owner will give us a license to go on the pole. They're not going to let us go on the poles that they know they're taking down because, as I was explaining, there's that large dance of red tape. They don't want to add us into that mix either. They don't let us go on any poles that are coming down anytime in the future.
So what type of site plan review would be, do you think would be appropriate?
I think a waiver pursuant to Section 2.2C is appropriate.
Yeah, I think we have, we have a hearing. We're addressing all the issues. I'm not sure we need any other permits on top of that. So I'd like to, because people have been patiently waiting, if anybody has a question from the audience, feel free to, if you could come up, and we'll see if we can get answers to the questions. Okay? There's none? Well, thank you for being so patient, then.
Then I will pack up.
Before we go, Rebecca, we still have, the applicant has the letter and should respond to every comment in the letter. Do you have a letter, or a letter from a consultant?
He does now have the review from the wireless review consultant and should address the current, the concerns that would.
You should get a copy of that and respond to that.
Because the only concern I noted was that the board may choose to require the EME report for the ones that are below 10 meters, which we discussed. I didn't identify any other concern.
Yeah, okay, but just if they raise any questions, just make sure if there's any open points, they get addressed.
We did ask about the guy wires and double poles.
Right, and I do have that.
And the signage is still open from the last meeting. You're going to provide us any copies of actual signage requirement that you're going to have on the poles? Whether it's a safety sign, any signage that's going to go on this?
There's no signage on any of these.
There's no, hey, high voltage wire, nothing? There's not a single sign on any?
There are labels on some of the equipment shown.
Okay, labels, yeah.
But there's no signs.
Okay, well, it's labels, then.
So you want the actual labels?
Yep, sizes, actual sizes. I don't want to see Verizon advertised on these, so I want to know exactly.
Have you ever seen Verizon advertised on a telecommunications facility?
Come on.
Really, have you?
Yeah.
I haven't.
Okay, I've seen some, they have the logo, and they use it as advertising to call for an emergency, so.
Okay, that's required by federal law. That's not advertising. There has to be an emergency contact.
Contact emergency number, but you don't have to have your logo with it. Call emergency number.
Okay.
Just let, just show the signage.
I can look into that level of detail, but it might actually be required by federal law, enough the logo, but certainly the name.
The logo's not required.
No, the name certainly is.
The name is, yeah.
Well, let's just see it, the signage. Because some of the stuff's at 10 feet high.
Yeah, I know, but let's.
I will get you the federal requirements.
I mean, we can come up with reasonable constraints and, you know, aesthetics.
What I can do is get you the federal requirements for information that needs to be on these. It may be considerably less than what we have to put on the macro sites or the larger facilities. I'll find out what they are, if any. We're not going to advertise, and if you want to give me a condition saying no advertising, I'm happy to accept that. It's not a problem.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you have a, just, do you have a process, if you're putting it in front of a house, of telling the people before the trucks show up with the equipment?
No, it's a one-day installation, very similar to when Comcast or NSTAR puts something on the poles. We can do that, that's not a problem, but we don't have that process in place. We don't go on their property. Like I said, we can do that. We don't typically do that.
I kind of would appreciate it if you ever come near my places.
We can do that. Do you want me to do it for everybody or just your place?
Okay.
And I saw knotted heads out there. And I know when the town takes down trees, they at least inform the person they're taking it from.
Yeah, but that's a totally different thing because it's a law.
And I, like I said, it's not something we have an established process for, but I have no problem having a condition like that and doing that. That's not unreasonable. but I have no problem having a condition like that and doing that. That's not unreasonable. It's something we can easily handle.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do we have a, a meeting date for the next meeting or how are we moving forward?
We will probably meet on the 17th, but there's a possibility we won't. We meet every two weeks, the first and third Tuesday.
Okay. So we're not sure?
So right now, the next week is our annual town meeting and we'll be meeting next Tuesday. So it depends, we're at the end of this meeting, we'll see how much is on the agenda for our next meeting and decide whether to hold it or not. If there's no other items, we may not, but I don't know yet, so that's the only caveat.
Okay, that's generally okay, but I think we, by state law, we have to continue the meeting to a date certain.
Well, if you want to wait till the end of our meeting, we'll tell you.
I think if it's going to happen tonight, that's fine. Maybe I can just connect with you, Rebecca, tomorrow to find out when that date is. That's fine.
But we normally meet every two weeks.
Okay, so likely the 17th and then I'll just confirm with you tomorrow?
Yeah.
I think that works. All right, so we'll get those items in pretty promptly. Obviously, I'm hoping that we can wrap it up on the 17th because this was a few months in the making now and not because of any delays from the board, obviously, but I'm trying to go forward, so.
At your point, we will, we will do the best we can.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on. The warrant article 28, let's hold that to the end. And let's do succeeding in order 1665 Great Pond Road and then 1636 Osgood Street and 70 Main Street.
We are looking at decent to 1665 Great Pond Road. As you can see, we had just recently done the permit for 1665 Great Pond Road. This is, as you can see, the parcel directly next to it. Specifically, so on July 3, 2013, the planning board approved a decision for a watershed special permit to construct a single-family dwelling unit and driveway, the demolition of an existing shed, the installation of utilities, stormwater management facilities and associated grading on an undeveloped parcel within 100 feet of the wetland and within 250 feet of the non-disturbance and non-discharge zones of the watershed district. The permit was set to expire in July of 2015. On May 22, 2015, the applicant came in and requested a watershed special permit extension due to the slow economy. The board granted the extension for one year and the permit will now expire on July 2 of 2016. Per the zoning bylaw, if the applicant can show good cause why substantial use or construction has not commenced within the two-year period, the special grant, permit granting authority at its discretion may extend the special permit for an additional one-year period. So Tom Zarigo is here to talk about his request for a second permit extension for this particular property.
Does the bylaw provide for that?
No.
No, no. The one year...
The one year is already given.
I mean, we can't conjure a, but okay, go ahead, let's talk.
That's, that's okay if that's the case, John. I mean, as I read the bylaw, you know, there was room for interpretation. Wasn't sure how this board was going to interpret it. As a point of information, my, my purchase agreement requires that I pursue extensions to permits. So I needed to do this to satisfy the agreement that I have. So I needed to submit it knowing that it may not be successful and understanding that. I wasn't sure if there was precedent for that. It does say that it can be extended for an additional one-year term. It doesn't say specifically that it cannot be extended again. So I thought there was at least a, a little bit of interpretation there if in fact there was any, there was any wiggle room for that. But, so there was, my reason was not to burden your time here at these meetings. My reason was because I had to, I had to apply and make the request. If there's room for it to be approved, that's fine. If there isn't, then I understand that, you know, that's the way it is and we'll take action on the, on the current permit anyway and that's our plan. We just wanted a little bit more safety room if it was available, that's it.
Well, I think you got your answer and thank you for being understanding about it, you know? But given the context, I don't see us having any flexibility on this. I think that's the consensus, so.
And that's okay. I appreciate you folks hearing me.
I hope you're enjoying the rest of the meeting.
I always plan the whole night when I come here and I always learn something from the other hearing, so I'm good with this. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, 1636 Osgood Rough and Tumble Play Care.
Yes, so the, this is actually at the 1600 Osgood. It's the building 48 in the back.
So this is part of Osgood Landing here?
Yep, I'm just going to pull up the locus for you right now so you can see. Because it was a little bit, I can't really see it that well. I tried to kind of shade it in for you so that you'd be able to see exactly what building this is for the locus. So the red triangle over there, that's building 48. So that's the building they're looking to occupy. And then, so the applicant is looking for a site plan review waiver to open a new business that will serve as a dog training center, play care, dog park and concierge service. The dog training will be done in partnership with the MSPCA. Play care will be supervised outdoor and indoor play groups. Now, what you see over in the white shaded section, that's the outdoor play area. And then there'll also be a dog taxi service that would provide transport for dogs from home to Rough and Tumble Play Care or local groomers or vets. So we have had meetings with Jerry Brown, the building commissioner. He has determined the use as kennel. It isn't an I-2, it isn't allowed use. Based on the approximate square footage, he has required three parking spaces. However, he was a little unsure if there would be an office component or any other additional components and if there was, that would obviously increase the parking requirements. Three per square foot in addition to the approximate three already proposed. He would personally like the applicant to prevent, present some more certified plans before making his final determinations on his, his end. Gene and I were out at the site and took a quick look. Some of the initial concerns that we talked about with the applicant was the existing barbed wire fence right around that white portion. You can, it's just, it's not in great condition. It's falling off of the fence. It seems like a very hazardous situation. Additionally, there was the lighting for that particular area, the landscape buffering. It's just a fence right now from that road, not that it's accessed frequently. And then additionally, there are some stormwater structures out there in the far, far corner where it's almost where it says outdoor area in that tip of the corner. It looks like from just reviewing it, you're not really knowing what's there existing. It looks like there's a water drain and a catch basin that drains out through that area. So there's a little bit of a hill and then a pipe and then it comes up and then it flattens out again. So that would be a concern in terms of where they're proposing to put the play outdoor. But again, those are just some initial concerns that we saw when we visited the site. And Mike and Sherry Hellman are here to speak more about their proposal and what they would like to see done for the area.
Good, great. It's all yours.
Okay, my name is Michael Hellman. This is my wife, Sherry Ben, who occasionally goes by Sherry Hellman. When it's expedient, we live at 890 Dale Street in, in North Andover. We've been business owners actually in Andover for the last 15 years and are moving away from that business and hopefully moving into this business. From, from the beginning, we've, we've worked with Rebecca and with Gene Enright to try to make this business, which is a new business in North Andover, work. It is a business that is being done currently in, in some homes without, without any oversight and which I know the building department knows, knows that. But from the beginning, we have, we've tried to work with the town and tell them every step of the way what our, what our plans are. So the, the idea here is we'll probably service about 30 dogs a day. The, most of them, I think, will be, will be delivered by their owners, but we are planning on doing some sort of a concierge service as well. The entrance we're going to use is the north, north entrance to Osgood Landing and they'll kind of go, go through that outer, outer ring so we'll never actually touch the area that is, that is the office space per se of, of Osgood Landing. So in terms of, in terms of the, the traffic flow, they're entirely outside of the, of the flow, the flow of Osgood Landing. There, there should be...
There's some people coming in and there are people that drop off, park and then come back out.
Let's see, additionally, Rebecca talked about the concern of the dog park area and the initial, the initial sketch we sent was, was a little rough with kind of, so that's...
That's the outdoor area right now that it would basically be a membership dog park. As a dog owner in North Andover, I find it very difficult to take my dog somewhere off-leash where it can run and play. And quite honestly, I'm not a person who goes to the dog parks that are town-run because there's no guarantees that the dogs have shots, vaccinations, where the dogs are from, or even if they're licensed. So we would be taking on the liability of the owners and making sure that the dogs are licensed, they are vaccinated and we know who they are and where they are in case an incident happens. As you can see, we took the outdoor space that Rebecca talked about and divided up into three different areas for the dogs. Those are the approximate fencing areas that we would put in. We're looking to actually use white vinyl fence. So we would probably cover up the outside fence as well in the red line so that we would not have any distractions for the dogs. So that they're not out barking at a deer running by or something like that. And the, we gated off at the bottom, the 60-foot there where the storm drains are. And we will remove the barbed wires as well as fix up what's there.
Relative to the barbed wire, there are two thin, two strands of barbed wire at the top of a fence that's five foot six inches high. And those, the landlord has given consent to, for us to remove those strands at the top of the fence.
What level of freedom do you have from the owner to make site improvements?
Pretty much whatever we would like to do as long as it's on our cost. This is an empty building that has not been rented for quite a while. We're in the process of working a lease with them where they're giving us that outside space. There's also a loading dock there that we'll use as a covered dog park area for inclement weather so that the dogs can be in there. And then we're taking about 6,500 square feet in the building itself. The rest of it, they're going to block off.
It would not be rented to anyone else?
Currently it is not. Right, yeah, and we have...
With rights to expansion.
We have rights, rights to, to expand into that property if we, if we, if we choose...
Where the dog area is now, that's all grass.
That's a grass-ish.
Not concrete, is what I'm asking.
No, no concrete.
Yes.
Where that blue line is, there is a partial concrete there up at the top which we will have to fence in to make the whole area fenced in.
And on the other side of that, I'm sure you know the area, but on the other side of that roadway is, is the MBTA followed by the...
Merrimack River.
Followed by the rivers. I don't think we, we have any tight, tighter butters there. I think we're pretty, pretty far away from the closest residents and, and we've cited it specifically. So we're pretty far away from the, from the offices as well so that the, you know, the sounds of dog barking will be, you know, we're, you know, close to a quarter mile from the, from the 1600 building.
Just on, we, we had a small building like this on the site, which was the act theater, which was all internal to an existing building and we did make them go through a site plan review. I don't know where, if it's outside now and inside if it's...
Well, I mean, you know, to some degree, it's an interesting thing, you know, just in general, the concept of a site plan review in the context of a, what am I going to say, is a large development parcel. Whether, you know, how much do you need that for each and every one of these? I mean, how many parking spaces are required?
Three.
So right now, based on the approximate square footage and the use of a kennel only, he has said three. However, if there's an office component or if there's any additional, where their employees go, things of that nature, then he said that there would be, based on that square footage, an additional three per square foot.
I mean, because technically, three doesn't even meet the site plan review standard. If you only, because you need five for a site plan review.
There, and I don't, I think you have it Rebecca, there is a, another picture. There's actually eight spaces that are available right there besides the other 10,000. We, there's the eight, there are eight spaces that can go on the side lot there in the yellow and then there's three that can actually go angled in front of the building and then...
And the eight are located, that's a grassy area, not a building, right?
Correct.
They're, yes, facing a grassy area there. There is very little past us down that, down that road.
What is it going to spot for a handicap?
Well, you will need one space for your covering the dogs.
Right.
And then people drop these, them off and if I can think of how I used to drop dogs off, there's, that always takes a while. So I think you, you know, you're going to want to have something.
Yeah.
Well, I think we can all agree there's plenty of parking in the site.
That was kind of our feeling.
Parking's not an issue. I think the only, the only issue I see is that the, you have stormwater catch basins that they didn't know where they drained to on that side and that's in the area you said is where you have your outside dog park or whatever it's, you know, proposed dog park, kennels, so.
We are blocking off the storm drains.
You're blocking off the storm drains?
So that, so that we're not covering them or the dogs are running over.
There are two, one in that far corner and I'm sorry and I neglected to say that where this fence is right here.
Right at the, right where the building comes closest to the fence.
You can see the swell running down that white thing from the building. That's another stormwater structure that they have right before the blue fence. So there are two that we know of and that we can see. I don't know what their plans are, what, what Osgood has on file.
But if you block them off, then they were there for a purpose. You can't just block them off.
No, we're just putting a fence there so that the dogs get into them.
Get to the space where the, where the drain is.
Okay, but what about the runoff from the dog waste and stuff like that into the stormwater? If that, because we, the concern is it may go into the wetlands or may go into the Merrimack that may be untreated. Those catch basins weren't deep thumps.
In fact, the whole sanitary situation, how are you going to dispose of the liquid and the solids?
We, we will have a removal company that'll come in and take it away either on a weekly basis or...
That's neat.
It will be removed from the grass area immediately.
Right, it's not going to stay. I mean, that's part of the reason for the dog park.
How about the interior?
We'll have a cleaning system inside that will clean and vacuum, but we're going to hope that...
And it goes where?
Again, we'll take it into a cleaning, a floor cleaning machine in the same way we'll dispose of it.
The, the floors that we're going to, going to put down there are, are these thick hard rubber, rubber floors that are impermeable, so you, you use a, like a supermarket cleaning, cleaning machine to, to do the services there.
Rebecca, question, what information do you need that you don't have on this to draw a reasonable assurance that, you know, this site gets managed prudently given sort of where it is and how it fits into this overall property? Is there anything you're looking for you don't have yet? Is there anything that you're concerned about?
Again, when we walk through the, the main concern for the fence, the delineation of the parking, the lines are drawn, but they're not, you can't see them where they are now. And then obviously to get confirmation from Jerry in terms of all of his approximate and all of his, this is what it's going to be, that type of stuff. So we really need that determination from Jerry in order to move forward in our regard, in our, on our behalf. But otherwise, they've adjusted the barbed wire fence, avoiding the stormwater, things of that nature. So there is nothing else that we could think of that would prohibit that in our regard.
What about like... So I appreciate that you have the whole plan with the truck coming in and it's going to clean out the property and everything, but don't we need something to say that that's going to happen, right?
Well, what I would suggest we do is, I mean, if we wanted to waive site plan review, I would issue a set of conditions that would be the equivalent of the decision. I mean, I think that's probably...
What about like the, the driving in? Is that marked where people are going to drive in? I don't...
Right, right now we have at least, we have at least the space, so.
No, 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 but I mean, you said they're going to come from, obviously from 125.
Correct.
Is there a lane marked?
Isn't the road blocked currently with concrete barriers?
The jersey barriers are actually so that they can't go past our building.
No, but I think there's granite barriers going down the roadway across the road halfway down.
Not to block this.
Okay, is it past?
It's past.
The route any number of times.
Where we turn, where you'd see it turning left.
Okay, yes, that's right past that turn though, okay.
Right, those are the jersey barriers.
Right, those are the Jersey barriers.
But why do you think people would go that way and not just come in the south entrance, like, like they're on the laser craze?
And then, I can't, I can't drive, I can't drive there, or they can't go, they can't-
We're on the opposite side of the building, it's not crazy.
It's very inconvenient to go, to enter the laser craze entrance and get, and get there.
We are right, what signage that you've proposed as well.
You can't go all the way around, it's blocked, that road, that's my point.
And laser craze would be on the other side of 1,600.
No, we are on the flip, 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 yeah. Flip the place over, where, you know, the laser craze and the tractor trailer school are on one side of the, we're on-
If you know where Act is, we are right near Act.
What about lighting for the parking lot and that type of stuff? I don't believe that part of the parking lot has any lighting that's up to code, or-
There's a, there's a light that's there, but, but we will probably add to that with, with lighting that is, that comes from the building out to the parking lot. Because I'm, I am guessing that the, the, the streetlight that's right there is prob- probably going to be insufficient. I haven't seen it at night, so.
And what they've said to us is they do have, because it's not currently used, the building, there may be streetlights that are turned off, but obviously, if the building is occupied, they will put the lights back on.
Now, is the building, just curiosity, the building that you turn around, that building is not occupied either next door, correct?
No.
Okay.
That is currently-
Is that even, that's, is that, like, wide open, that building, I believe?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's two-story wide open. It used to be a baseball company or something.
I just wanted to see if I have the location, yeah.
Yeah, it used to be an indoor baseball.
Yeah, so, I mean, the route has to be properly lit, too, for photometrics and stuff like that, so I think, we can, we can do that condition, because I don't believe there's any lighting down there, or maybe one.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the, the landowner has to do certain things, and it seems like you've been working with the landowner on this, so, property owner, I guess is a better term, so. Yeah, I mean, I think, well, this is a reasonable thing to do here, is to lay out everything we would like to see, and issue a letter, and we can tie it in with what the building inspector does, I think that's fair. So, unless anybody thinks otherwise, I mean-
Until we see the conditions, it's hard to say.
Well, we, what we ought to do is, what I would suggest is you write something up for next meeting, all the things that-
I mean, we, we were worried about, you know, the signs on the telephone cables, and here we're dealing with-
Right, but we're dealing with something that's in the context of a very large property at the very back of it, so.
Right, but, poof.
Oh, the poop's not a problem, as long as it doesn't go into the stormwater.
We need to know, are there standards for how you take care of that, or that be in a veterinarian?
They can keep all the poop, they wanna store the poop in their own building forever, really, really, it's not our problem.
Well, yes, it would be.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, it's our responsibility to keep it clean, because as a dog owner, you don't wanna bring your dog there if there's dog poop everywhere. So, and that's part-
It's also a health concern.
Right, and that's, I mean, but that's part of the reason that we wanna do the membership dog park, because we wanna ensure that it is removed and cleaned up.
A little bit different.
But I don't, I just think we need things that-
So, everybody okay with this approach?
Yes.
Okay. So, check in with us, we will lay out a bunch of things, it's kind of like, more of an informal site plan review of the things that we want, and we will do that next time, but stay in touch with Rebecca, just to make sure, because we may have some questions, did you talk to the landlord about this, that, the other things?
Can you, for the next meeting, can you give us some actual photos of that location, opposed to aerials and actual pictures of, like, the yard, you know? It looks like it's not much grass, right now, you know, so that we can get a better idea of it, opposed to the satellite images, so.
Absolutely.
And the building and stuff like that, and the parking area, if you can give us some photos, that'll help, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, we got one item that we're left with, the main part of the agenda, before we go into our internal topic, 70 Main Street?
Yes, so, the applicant is requesting a determination for an insubstantial change to the site plan review special permit issued on January 6, 2015, to realign the driveway entrance on Main Street. I was not here at that point in time, but apparently, there was original discussions during this process about doing something of that nature, however, the easement was just a concept at the time, now the easement, I guess, is finalized, and therefore, they want to implement this plan. And Mark Yanowitz is here to speak on behalf of the project.
Who gets the pictures?
Uh, yes. I can provide the locus of this site, as it has changed.
Yeah, quite a bit. I think the, the site improvement plan might be best to start with, which, C 1.3 of the submittal, and, and to go back to, I think it was early 2000, I'm sorry, Mark Yanowitz speaking on behalf of Bradstreet Partners LLC, the development company engaged in actively developing the site. So, yeah, so this was the site layout improvement plan approved by this board back in early 2015, and the area in question, again, this is really a, a discussion about the, you know, that we consider insignificant, or, or a minor revision to this, this site plan, is, is the access off Main Street. You can see it in the bottom-left of that site plan, and if you zoom in, correct. So, directly adjacent to the left on the plan, which is approximate north location-
Is that this?
That's the, that's the, that was the, approved.
So, that's what we, what we approved.
That's what you approved.
Yes.
And so you see the dash line slightly to, you know, angled to the left of the driveway entrance is the property line, between us and the, the building next door, the commercial building.
Right.
Which, on the corner closest to our project is a liquor store, and then some other retail businesses, with some studio apartments above. They have a, they have a, presently, a driveway which would not probably get approved by today's standards because of width, so they have full pavement from the edge of their building to the property line, and, and there's actually a kind of a curb that, that makes a elevate, slight elevation change. So, the, where we show our driveway entrance, it's the lower part of the lot, it was, in our studies, was, was the best location to access our site. And, you know, in consideration of, you know, having a driveway next to a driveway, it, it seemed like an opportunity which, as Rebecca mentioned, we identified at the original application time, be ideal for us to share the access to the site with, with the neighbor. So, over the course of the past year, we studied that, went back and forth with the neighbor, and had, and basically have, have constructed a, a shared access easement, so that we would both come off the same entrance. Our entrance shifts slightly to the left, and slightly overlaps the property line, and then in turn, we're able to turn, create a landscape buffer to the building adjacent, and a pedestrian walkway. I'm hoping Rebecca's able to draw that up.
Can I try and pull it up right now?
It's on the Bradstreet Neighbor Reciprocal last page.
Yeah. Yeah, we had talked in the initial thing about the danger of people walking down the driveway.
Correct.
That it's gonna be used by cars and trucks.
And so, and actually, to be honest, you see a line on, adjacent, parallel to the side of their building, there's not a walkway there, that almost implies there is a walkway, but, but if you visit the site, it's really just asphalt pavement directly to the edge of their building. And you can see how their property line, okay, here you go. And there, I think there are a couple different documents, but we slightly shifted the driveway, we're, on that plan, you're not seeing the property line, but it's, it, we're approximately, I think, five feet onto their property with the curb of the driveway entrance, we're creating, we're creating a concrete walkway, five-foot walkway directly parallel to the edge of their property, that, their building, to connect a pedestrian from the sidewalk to the rear of their building. You see that's shaded, and, and then we're doing a landscape buffer, and, and slightly expanding our landscape buffer at, at the entrance, to the right side of the, of the driveway.
But you still have people getting to the parking lot by walking down the driveway?
Well, no, no, by no means.
There's two walkways now.
There's a walkway on, on, on both, on the edge of both buildings.
Oh, that's, that's wide enough there, I see, it gets pretty narrow up there.
Where are you pointing? On, on the right side, or?
Here. Stand up, I guess.
Yeah. That's not, no, that's landscape. The walkway is the-
That's just a walkway.
The walkway is, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, just based on initial blush, this is actually pretty good, because what you've done is you've taken two curb cuts and made one, and created landscaping and additional walkway, it's, and it's collaboration of landowners, that's really a nice thing.
Is, we feel, we feel it's a benefit to all, both property owners and the town. We're, I think it's helping, it's minimizing traffic coming out of two driveways, we're increasing previous area drainage, and it, it, it just makes sense, you know, not to have two driveways right next to each other.
Good, that's good. I think you've made yourself an ultimate victory of what?
I just wanna say, say we should get our public safety, just to make sure the fire department's good with the turn into the, into, not, I think, into the new-
So, would somebody like to make a motion, or would that continue to see that we, the planning board has made a determination that this is an substantial change? As spoken.
Second.
Do we have to repeat it?
No, that's fine. And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Very good, thank you, all right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
A couple things, I would like to, to talk for like a minute on the CPC stuff, but what I'd also like to do, more importantly, is if you don't mind, that we do go into executive session at the end, because I wanna tell you about what happened last week, about our favorite project. Won't take very long.
No, are we, can we, if it's not on the agenda? It's not on the agenda?
It's okay, he said we could do it.
Okay.
He said we could do it.
Fine with me.
So, I talked to him today, I saw him today, so, because I asked if he was coming tonight, yeah. He's not, yeah, so.
Rebecca, on the agenda, we can cross off watershed informational mailer, it's been on there, I think, for two years, but we don't have to carry it anymore.
Well, Peter was discussing that you were talking about, or that's the initial of the conversation, again, that wasn't here, is that-
There's two mailers.
It's gonna be smaller.
Okay.
The one mailer was everyone in the water.
Oh, you wanna do the one for the newsletter?
No, no, the next mailer should be, at least as we had discussed, is for lake shore property donors and the butters of tributaries.
Okay.
And, because that's the direct sort of impact, at least that's what we had talked about.
That's what you had mentioned, I wasn't there for the initial conversation, I just got the end.
But, but we also talked about that the second mailer would not take two years.
That was us, not you.
And, for the water quality research, John, I could briefly-
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I did talk to Jean, and I think she has spoken to Bruce about coming before the board with the long-awaited graphs, and they have them.
Oh, good.
And, it's not, you know, every single measure, it's only a couple measures to give some indication, and I think Jean was looking for a meeting, she actually was thinking of the last meeting, but of course, that was so much on the agenda, it didn't make sense, even though Bruce was here. So, my understanding is, one of the next meetings to get that on the agenda, and Bruce would come in and brief the board on the graph and what that means.
But, but, I think that'd be great, yeah, it'd be great, and I'm very curious to see what it shows, so.
Well, I think there's some items of interest there, that would be helpful to the board.
Yeah, so, there's, having empirical information, you know, we, we approve these site plans, and we put all these mitigating things, that'll be interesting to see if it actually works or not, yeah.
And I don't know that these particular graphs are gonna give us a yes or a no, but I think they will, at least from my perspective, help make the point that having this type of data is useful to give us measures. How are we doing? And, and maybe where is there some need for some emphasis?
Yeah. So, great.
Yeah, thanks.
If, if everybody could give me a minute or two on the CPC stuff, article, it's Article 28, it's on page 18 of this thing, 18 to 19. This was a, really, it kind of a very unusual year, because we got an unbelievably large number of applications, to the point where, we actually, was the only time I ever remember where we, we didn't have enough money to fund everything, if we felt like funding it, and, yeah, part of the reason for that is we, there were a couple of projects that came up, like, I'm trying to think, Gene Willis never came to this board, right, with his property that he owned, or it's, it's, it's over on the other side of 114, Boston Street. Did he come here? I'm trying to remember, I know he came to the CPC. He came, and we talked about it, and we said we just didn't have the appetite, it was partly because he wanted too much money, and partly because it wasn't really, you know, in the right area. We told him to work with the people, trustees of reservation, and if he can't sell it commercially, then he could work with them, if they would come up with something, but, you know, that was an example of one that didn't happen. The, there was another property that came up, but we were, there was too much work that needed to be done, and we didn't fund that, and there were a couple of other things we didn't fund. So, in terms of the things that we, we did fund, we had some very interesting discussions, and some of them, to say the least, but I wanna, I wanna draw your attention to a couple items that are really interesting ones, is, the first, the Leonard Farm Conservation Restriction. The Leonard Farm is actually off of Dale Street, right on the very edge of town, if you're going into Boxford, it's really the last thing that you see on the right in North Andover.
It's where Smolak, yes, his-
No, 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 that's, that's further down, that's in Boxford, it's the chickens, yeah, the chicken. But they, this is a case where the Essex County, Greenbelt, we really have them to thank for this, they ended up working with the landowner who had an interest in actually preserving the land, and they actually arranged a conservation restriction on like 60 acres of property, and they sold the conservation restriction for far less than market value, they got an appraisal and everything. And, basically, they got some money from the town of Boxford and some other groups, and this is the contribution from the town of North Andover. We're gonna actually have rights to walk the land, and trails, and everything, so it's actually a, I should have brought the, the map and everything, it's a really kind of a cool project, and we're thankful, this is the old model for land purchases, where we work with another party who basically does the deal, and then turns it over to us.
60 acres for 325?
Yeah, we don't own it, it's a conservation restriction, yeah.
That's, that's a bargain.
It's a great deal, it's, it's, it's a great deal, yeah, and it's actually, I think there's actually even more acreage, but there's some of it's wet, so, and some of it's in Boxford, but they're still preserving it. The other one that I wanted to mention specifically, and I can't go into it in too much detail, is this 45 Milk Street Preservation Property, which we're still working on, and may not come to fruition, it's, if people are aware of it, it's the property right next to the Drummond Playground, that, if, you would never notice, but there's an older house there, but then there's four acres of land behind the house, that directly abuts the town, that the land of the town- town, that, the land that the town owns, and the trustee zone and other, it's actually the largest undeveloped parcel in the...
Like that, like that old town center?
Prosperance Fire Station, or it still exists, but...
Oh, yes, I got it.
Yeah. So you got the, the baseball softball field there, and then it's all the land in back of the softball field. It's just proving to be a very, very difficult project to get a deal done on, I think everybody wants to do it, it's just a question of being able to get a deal done, and I'll leave it at that.
Should that be more outdoor play space?
Yeah, it would be, I mean, you know, ideally, it's a perfect extension to the existing softball field, I mean, it's, it's, you always, if you were looking for something you wanted, you couldn't find a better thing than this. The problem is, it's, it's proved complicated to close a deal, you know, I'll just leave it at that.
It's a lot of money.
Well, yeah, well, that's, we're not gonna do it for that much money, where we, there's a reason why we put in that amount, you know, I can explain to you.
That's okay.
Separately, the, so that's, you know, and then beyond that, it's, a lot of the stuff is the normal sort of stuff that, that we do. We had a lot of, you know, work on like the project with, oh, got the library project, we went over and over, and we probably had six meetings on that till it came to a resolution of what they needed, you know, and everybody knows that the, the library roof's a disaster. The question was, how broad should the scope of the project be? Should we replace all the shingles or not? And the answer was, we decided not to, because the consultant that they had said that a lot of them didn't need to be replaced, and we ought to wait, because they could go for 25 years, so in which case, why would you replace them if you didn't need to? So...
Can I ask a question about the Kittredge School Playground?
It's my old school.
I know, but how come it comes under this and not like under the school budget or public work?
Well, if you, yes, a, if you remember going back two years ago, when one of the school, it was actually sergeant came with a proposal, and they were gonna put a lot of their money up, and we, we, one of the things that do get funded is the playgrounds, because there's no other way to do it. They, we ended up agreeing that what we would do is every year, put 100,000 in here for a different school, and all of the PTOs got together and decided this was the order, and they actually voluntarily agreed to it, so we've been funding 100,000 a year, the town funds, where do they fund? They, they agreed to maintain all the properties, because one of the problems is, you know, is lack of maintenance, so this is a way...
That, I was gonna say, there was a town, there was a consultant hired to do an assessment of all the playgrounds, and they rank ordered them based on accessibility and safety and et cetera, and came out with a ranking, so this is the next school on the list to get the money.
Yeah.
Is this the last work of Ridgewood? Is that it?
This is it.
Okay, so that's a lot, a lot of money now.
Does this cover what's currently going on?
No, it's for the, the other side of it, and we've been at the, the Memorial Day event, that's the piece that is left, that's the piece will be done this year, that's at the end. It's on the other side of the main part of it. So it, they'll be done, it, it fits with their master plan that we had them do, but people don't realize is that every town in the Commonwealth has, yeah, so...
I just have to, own two pieces of property there.
Oh, there you go, so...
I'll make a favorable, make a motion for favorable action on Article 28.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for all the work you've done.
This was hard this year, and it's still hard, because we still have this one, we're trying to pin down, yeah.
Good stuff.
Okay, so we have to, do we have a...
So if we could make a motion to go into executive session...
Should we do minutes first?
Oh, minutes, okay, yep.
I didn't go through them yet. Someone else can feed them.
I didn't look at everything, but I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
From which meeting?
April 19.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So...
We're just waiting for the, in terms of the next meeting, so town meeting is on May 10.
What else do we have coming up?
So, other than what we just went through with the Verizon grant, the 1636 Osgood, what you just heard, then I'm still waiting for, for 17, 75, 1755 Osgood, I'm still waiting for them to get me a revised plan, so that we can go through what we had originally discussed in terms of getting some reviews from additional departments, and also courtesy notices to the Butters, so I'm still waiting on that, so there's, those that we can put on the agenda, they're open items, but for the May 10 one...
What would the date be? That would be the 17th.
That would be for the 17th. The May 10 one is the only thing we have on the agenda, is to discuss the Warren Articles prior to the town meeting.
So personally, my daughters are graduating the Saturday before and the Sunday after. I am gonna have family coming in and out and whatever, so I, I'm not sure I'll even meet that meeting.
The 17th?
The 17th.
Yeah, but then, if, I mean, you can miss the meeting, because otherwise, I mean, if we're gonna hold them up, it's a three, it's a five Tuesday month, we're gonna hold up the applicants for another four weeks.
And the next meeting would be June 7.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, when I, what's wrong with scheduling it, and if I can make it?
Yeah, let's schedule it and see who can make it, yeah. I think that's...
So the May, for the May 10th, I will also send out...
Yeah, just send something out, because we just never know what might come up that we have.
And with that, there's also the room number...
You have too much stuff going on.
Whatever, whatever room we get, yeah.
There won't be anything to do.
Yeah, okay.
We can get these two people in and out in five minutes, so you can skip it.
I'll miss the five-minute meeting.
Yeah, exactly. You get to stay for the long ones.
There you go.
All right, that's about...
Okay, so let's, somebody would like...
You gotta tell them to be stressed out.
I was unaware that we were having an executive session, so we'd have to...
Well, that's okay, we'll do what it is.
I can, I think I can wing it.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss legal matters and not return to open session.
Okay.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call.
You're going, I?
Warren McSherry, aye.
Dave Kellogg, aye.
John Simons, aye.
Lynn Riddicki, aye.
Regina King, aye.
Okay.